I went to, I went to take fireball tea, did the golf course on Monday and got there and thought, oh, they're not open on Monday.
Well, the restaurant?
So we had nuggets.
I told her afterwards, I said, that's the best meal I've had in a long time, and she
didn't like that either.
It's only four hours a day between two officers, and so at this point it's reached its life expectancy, so just requesting it be declared as surplus.
Would somebody care to make that offer?
I will.
Thank you, Al.
Second.
And thank you, Laurel. Any questions of Connor on this vehicle?
Yes, Your Honor, I'm gonna try this, I don't think this works.
I don't think it does sound, you've got a pretty clear voice.
I've got a Marine Corps voice. I appreciate you, Mr. West, being here. It says that the vehicle goes with stuff inside of it. What, what are we looking at that goes with it, the package of what Staples will get, I guess?
Correct, it would be a light bar, and then a cage, the computer mount, radar unit, and then the printer itself. We would be removing the computer and air card which operates the computer, gas ring which is provided by the city, so that equipment, and radio head, excuse me, we just purchased new radios, so the radio head would be removed. Staples Police Department would supply the radio and, and computer.
And we, we sell it to them because it makes the vehicle more attractive, it has more value if we sell it all in there, or is it just, the material is just not useful to us anymore, we can't put it in other vehicles, or how does it work?
More attractive to them, in the sense that we would have to have it all removed, so just the package deal is a little bit easier for the, the police department, just to sell it as, as is excluding things that are specific to the police department, the computer and the radio.
Thanks.
Any other questions of Connor? If not, a roll call.
No.
We can just do a motion. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign, hearing none, the motion is approved. Everybody good with that for the consent agenda?
Thank you.
Connor, thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
The next item is chicken permit code update. Clara Beck requesting action of the council is to amend City Code 91.52 and remove the limited number of chicken permits.
Good morning, council members. We have had an ordinance on the books since 2009 that allows for chickens to live alongside humans in R1 and R2 zones. Traditionally, we have had a cap on that number. At first, it was, I think, 12 homes were allowed to have chickens, then we upped it to 20. And just due to recent demand, changes in grocery prices, people wanting to be more self-sufficient, we have reached our limit of 20, and we have a waiting list. In discussion with animal control, we do feel that it is acceptable to remove that limit of 20 and allow people to get chickens on their property if they would like. They do have to follow all of the rules of the ordinance and get consent from their neighbors, but we do not see an issue with upping that number to 20. If you also see fit, we would like to remove it. Any questions?
Does somebody care to make that offer?
I'll make that.
Thank you, Scott. Somebody second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Scott.
Oh, and now that Scott mentioned it, said words, I remembered that he emailed yesterday to remind. This also includes quail, so it's a two-poultry permit.
Any questions of Clara?
How many people are on the waiting list?
Hmm, I don't know. At least one.
So not, we don't have like 20 more on the waiting list or anything like that?
No.
Who knows?
They come very cyclical in the spring, but people that have, have taken them out have kept their licenses for much longer than they have been earlier on.
With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign, hearing none, motion is approved. Everybody good with that on the consent agenda?
Yep.
If somebody wishes to pluck it off later, they can.
Mr. Comedian, here we go.
The next item on the agenda is a statewide affordable housing aid regarding Ada-1 West Stanton. Again, Clara, the recommendation of the council is to approve a resolution using statewide affordable housing aid funds for the acquisition and development of a mixed income project for Ada-1 West Stanton.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a little background, in the 2023, 2022, 2023 legislative sessions, the state decided that they would put in allocations of money for municipalities that would go toward affordable housing projects. So in 2023 and 2024, the city did receive allocations from the state of Minnesota that could be used for qualifying projects. When we received those funds, we were in the midst of acquiring, or at some point in that process, we were in the midst of acquiring Ada-1 West Stanton where we had a gap between the state funding that we had received from the Community and Energy Transition Grant, and then the actual acquisition price. So we've been thinking along the line that we could use some of this funding to help fund that gap and make a project happen. So in order to give us the most flexibility with those dollars, because we do want to have the option to have a mixed development on that site of market rate and then affordable to the local workforce, we are asking that council pass a resolution that certifies that it will be going toward an affordable to the local workforce project and that allows us to have some more flexibility in the kinds of housing units that we are doing on the site. So the request before you today, and then hopefully moving forward on to, into Monday, is to use 240,769 of our statewide affordable housing aid toward the acquisition price of Ada-1 Stanton. As a reminder, we did already acquire it, so this would be going to close that gap. Happy to answer any questions.
Would somebody care to make that resolution?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Jim. Somebody care to second it?
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Questions of Clara? Big as a gap down to just $71,000 from the total cost, so with that, all those in, do you want a roll call? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again, same sign, the motion is approved, everybody good with the consent agenda?
Yep.
The next item on the agenda is Otter Express Public Transport Joint Powers Agreement. I will call upon Andrew Bremseth, the recommendation to the council to approve the public transportation joint powers agreement.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, members, good morning. At your last council meeting, you appointed the mayor, Anthony Hicks, and council member Scott Kwame to serve on the Otter Express Joint Powers Board. And to formally establish this board, the agreement that's in your packet has been created for your approval. That spells out the terms and conditions of how the board will operate and what their functions will be. That document was spearheaded by Otter Tail County with input from the various partners to the joint powers board. There are proposed to be four members of that board, Otter Tail County, Wilken County, and then the cities of Fergus Falls and Purham. The memo highlights the seats that are on the board. There'll be two seats for the city of Fergus Falls, like I just mentioned. City of Purham will have one chair, Otter Tail County three, Wilken County one. These numbers of representatives are directly proportional to the financial participation from each of these entities. We, city of Fergus Falls, has historically contributed $50,000 a year for Otter Express, and this agreement contemplates that that funding amount continues. So that 50,000 is more than the cities of Purham and Wilken County, which is why we have an extra seat at the table for the joint powers board. Ultimately, this joint powers board will oversee and manage the operation of transit within the areas of these entities, and the Otter Tail County organization will serve as the fiscal agent for the board and support the board in that capacity. There is a withdrawal provision within the contract, so if it's not working out for the city, or we don't see that there's a value to it, there is a one-year written agreement, or we can get out by unanimous consent of the parties if the board were to take a different direction or cease to exist. So, anyway, the agreement before you can be approved by resolution, and that will solidify our participation, put things in motion, and I know the group has their first meeting scheduled for next week already. It has been ratified by the other parties, so it's in final form. I will note there, you see the little, on the second page of the agreement, I crossed out six and wrote seven. Wilken County was kind of a late addition to this, and that number just wasn't changed, but there will be seven members on the board, as I just highlighted. So, this can be approved by the council by resolution on Monday night, Your Honor.
Thank you. Would somebody care to make that?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Laurel. Would somebody care to second it?
I'll second.
Thank you, Laura. Any discussion?
I think just a question, Your Honor. Your, Your Honor, as a mayor and one council member, are your, is your vision that the mayor will kind of hold that post, and then you'll switch out the council member every so often, or?
Yeah, I think, I don't think it has to be specifically the man. I think it would just to get it going and get something documented. Any other questions?
Is the intent to have the garage still continue on at Productive Alternatives, or is that not a long-term solution for the base of the, of the group?
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember Killian, I guess, I don't specifically know those details, but my understanding is that Productive Alternatives will no longer be involved, and I don't know if that building is owned by them or not, I'm speaking way out of turn on that, but this group will have the ability to decide where it goes from here.
So hopefully we'll still have a pretty significant base in Fergus as the intent?
From my discussions with Clara, Kayla, that's, that's the intent. I know, I think Purham would like something based out of Purham, but there are costs associated with that as well. So, thank you.
Maybe ask Sean, do you know that, Sean, if that's owned by Productive Alternatives or not?
Mayor, council member, what was the question, I'm sorry?
That, that garages, are they owned by Productive?
The current location is owned by Productive Alternatives, it'll be a lease arrangement of some sort until something else is figured out.
It's, Your Honor, it's actually the state of Minnesota owns, I just looked it up on my phone here, I think, Productive Alternatives, but it kind of goes back to the state the way it looks.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again, same sign, hearing none, motion is approved, good with the consent agenda?
No, we have to have a resolution.
Oh, yeah?
Don't we have to have a resolution?
You do, but you can do that on consent.
On the consent?
Correct.
Fine.
The next item?
Mayor.
Yeah, come on, wake up, Jim.
Hello. Hey, I've been up since four.
Mark has something.
In regards to this, Andrew, how soon do you think they'll have a budget? How do we address it? We just lock the 50 for next year?
Yeah, Your Honor, council member Layton, we're likely going to be locked into the 50 going forward as part of this agreement, not just next year, but annually. And then this group will use the local funds to, as match or as leverage to be able to get state funding or grants to operate. So I envision the group will create a, a budget for the remainder of this year and for next year in a relatively short order, but then significant work will have to happen in relation to grants and state funding going forward. But I, I envision the city's contribution of 50,000 being static for a period, a large, a long period of time.
Am I correct to say that that money wasn't paid in '25?
I don't know if it has been or not.
Tom, we've been paying quarterly, I believe, I'll have to look.
Because it's operating currently as it has been.
Correct. Yeah, and the intent would be that, you know, the, the $50,000 would just shift over to the new operation. So whenever that, you know, whenever the official switch happens, I don't know if that's the end of the year, beginning of next year, or if it's still, you know, this year, but the monies will just go from one to the other.
And are they confident that the state will provide additional funding to outbreak this?
Yeah, MNDOT has, has done a good job over the years of providing support for local transit. Yep.
Thank you.
Jim?
People ask why 50,000, and actually, the 50,000 goes back to way back when, when we gave $50,000 a year for senior transportation within the city. So the 50,000 has, has been there for a long, long time.
Yeah, definitely since, prior to the inception of Otter Express, and, you know, we didn't look back for a number of years, but I'd say it's at least 20 years that we've been doing that, so.
And I know that's kind of the desire to have the kind of first two meetings quickly is because they have to develop the budget for '26 and apply for state funding. The next item on the agenda is emergency management code updates. Andrew Bremseth, recommendation to the council to direct the city attorney to draft an amendment to City Code 34.02, the emergency management.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, council members. Obviously, with the announcement of Chief Bergeron's pending retirement, myself and Chief Mukau and Chief Bergeron sat down and looked through our existing codes and have determined that there may be some amendments in order for us. All three of us thought it would be practical and an appropriate time to shift the emergency management duties that Kyle is currently performing over to Chief Mukau at the fire department. Chief Mukau is, is very well-prepared and very trained to absorb these duties and carry on the good work that Chief Bergeron has done in the emergency management space over the years. And in talking with not only the recruiter that we're using for the police chief job, but also Chief Bergeron and Chief Mukau, it's more and more common that cities that have a full-time fire chief on staff are doing the emergency management duties, and you're seeing it housed within the police department less and less. And one of the, the reasons why we think the timing is, is right on this is because if we make this shift now, it allows us to hire a police chief rather than a chief of public safety, and both Kyle and the recruiter have indicated that you're going to see more candidates or more qualified candidates by setting it up, looking for a police chief as opposed to a emergency management or a public safety chief, because many of the chiefs or captains or sergeants or lieutenants that would be looking at a job like this probably don't have a background in specifically emergency management. The way our code reads today is that the emergency management must be within the Department of Public Safety, which is essentially the police department. So we went through and redlined the section related to what was, it's 34.02, it used to be the Department of Public Safety and Chief of Public Safety, and the redline version in your packet essentially changes out public safety for police and then removes that the department shall be responsible for all of the things we just talked about. So really just cleaning that up and making sure that we're doing what we can to best recruit a qualified candidate, but also utilize the strengths and resources we have within the city right now. So the action, Your Honor, is motion directing the city attorney to draft those amendments, as highlighted, and then you'll, you could see that on Monday night, we'll also likely have the first reading for these changes on Monday night as well.
Would somebody care to make that motion, Mark?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Laurel. Any discussion?
Mr. Bremseth, can you define emergency management? What that details? As a layperson, I understand emergency in many, many fashions.
Yeah, you know, if, if Chief Mukau's up for it, I'd probably defer to him, because he's the one that's trained in this space. I mean, I could give you a pretty good definition, but.
Good morning, council, council member Layton. So emergency management is kind of all aspects, so it's hazard mitigation planning, so planning for the events, mitigation strategies to, if an event does happen, what are some of the things that we're doing now or can do to try to make things more resilient when a storm or a natural disaster or human, human-made event happens in our community? Like, what, what are we doing to be better prepared for it? So emergency management is not so much focused on the, the emergency at hand, because that's what police, fire, EMS, public works, we all jump in when an event happens. A lot of this work is done, what are we doing at the, bringing people together before an event happens? And then also the recovery phase of keeping connections with, whether it's the state agency for financial support, sheltering support, or even the federal government through FEMA. So it's a little more broader, broader scope, but it's not actually managing an incident that's still, still the local police chief, fire chief. You guys as city council are, are a role in that as well, as if we need a declaration, emergency declaration, that is your body to declare that, and then that gives us the, the ability to, to provide care in immediate fashion.
Thank you, Ryan. So I look at it in a layman's position, let's say we have an active shooter, what happens? Is that emergency management, or is that direct to the police?
So that's a direct response from the police department. Prior operation to that, emergency management plays a role in bringing all people to the table to train for that. You know, example is the tabletops we do with the police department, Lake Region Healthcare, the school coming into play with that. So that's, that pre-role is more what we look at with the emergency management, the response, the direct response. That is, that is the police department's lane to, to get to. We're there as a, as an agency for medical care and evacuation, but that emergency management piece is, the big part of that is the, the pre-planning for that, being, being ready for an event.
Much, much more clear now, is you're more on the, if you will, the front end of the same training, be it an active shooter, a chemical spill on a railroad, a fire at a chemical facility, et cetera. So at that point, your training is in place, and each department knows what their play is.
That, that is the ultimate goal with emergency management, is to keep people informed, and, and it's even for the public, and how do we notify people? All that plays into the outdoor warning sirens are another example of things that emergency management takes, takes care of.
Good job, sir, I appreciate your service.
Mark?
Your Honor, one question. Chief, I appreciate your willingness to go forward and do this and take on the role when you have many other roles that you have already. Is there anything you need to be able to do this role effectively at the highest capacity? Is there anything you need from the council to assure that you're successful in taking this on for our community?
You know, right now, just the support, even watching the support that Chief Bergeron had as things would come up, and transition pieces, there's still going to be a lot that goes on within the police, police department when it comes to emergency management. So while, yes, maybe in a sense the duties or the, the figure is shifting, there's still a really good alliance with the police department. So to the specific question, I can't think of anything right off the top of my head on what, what would be an item needed, other than just the continued support of the council when it comes to preparing for the events that could happen in our community. And I'll certainly be working with Chief Bergeron on somewhat of a transition and what duties kind of stay within, you know, the police administration, and what things that we're going to keep doing at the fire department as well.
I would equally add, these are like living documents, so there's kind of generally frequent reviews, and then as different things happen in different communities, then you, as you say, you do tabletop trainings on the what-ifs, this could happen. So as you say, it's never a static document, or it shouldn't be, that sits on a shelf and collects dust, so.
Correct. Then another, the emergency operations plan for the city is another big component of the, of the position, and ours was in 2016, was the, the most recent plan. Certainly, we look at it and, and learn from it, but, you know, that's another one that'll be, it'll need some updating as, as we move forward, but we try to very closely mirror Otter Tail County, just because we are working with them hand in hand if something was to happen. So our plan and the Otter Tail County emergency plan are pretty, pretty well in sync.
Two-point question, on that plan point, will you be waiting to kind of do the major revisions to that plan until we have a new police chief on board, so that person, okay, that makes sense. Second, recognizing you have a very full-time role already, does adding this to you, does something need to be peeled off? Do we need another assistant, another part-time something at the fire hall to offset this? Or can your workload handle this in a reasonable way that isn't putting too much burden on what's the expectations of your role?
I appreciate the question. It's a good, it's a good question. Sometimes I don't know until we, until we really get full-on vested with it. I still entail that there's going to be a lot of good shared responsibility with, between fire and police on it, and, you know, if that becomes a, a problem, and I have to have conversations with Andrew about this is, you know, too much, I mean, we certainly want to be helpers and do what we can, and I think it's a good, a good move holistically, but, you know, to the pointed question, sometimes I'm not, I'm not sure, maybe one, couple weeks might be really bombarded with something, and then maybe it'll cool off for a while, so I'm certainly good with the ebb and flows of, of a workday, so.
And then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again, the same sign, hearing none, everybody good with the consent agenda?
Yeah. Your Honor, can I say one more thing about that? Thank you, and thank you, Chief Mukau. One thing I learned during this police chief recruitment process and speaking with the national recruiter that we're working with, he did a number of interviews before we went live on that position, and, and one of the things that he remarked to me before we went live was he was so impressed with the relationship that our police department has with our fire department, and the cooperation and the partnership, and, you know, Ryan talked about that briefly here this morning, but, but I think it's bigger than that, and I think it's, they do a remarkable job, and, you know, that's a testament to not only the chiefs, but also the lieutenants and sergeants and our full-time staff and our captains on the fire department. Just recently, I was part of a tabletop training exercise with both departments in cooperation with Ringdell Ambulance, Lake Region Healthcare, and the work that they do is just impressive. And as kind of the civilian in the room, I, I went home feeling like I was fulfilled that evening and that we're in good hands, and if something were to happen, we're well-prepared because of the expertise and the time and energy and training that Chief Mukau, Chief Bergeron, and their teams put in. So he downplays that a little bit, but the reality is these guys are all in, they do a wonderful job, and, you know, we had a lot of conversation about this before we brought this forward, and he downplayed it quite a bit there, but he does a lot for us, and he's going to continue to do good work, and, and we'll make sure that they have the resources to be successful as we move forward. So just wanted to comment on that.
Thank you, Andrew. The next item on the agenda is contracting engineering services. Andrew Bremseth Personnel Committee, a request is a recommendation to the council to approve an entering into a master service agreement and task order number one with more engineering, and I will turn it over to Andrew for discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, members. I'll kick us off, and then if Personnel Committee wants to jump in, they certainly can do so. Since the departure of our former city engineer, we as a Personnel Committee have been meeting fairly frequently to discuss the options for replacing the position. As part of our due diligence, we looked at both hiring for the existing position and just posting that and seeing what was out there, and also the potential for contracting out these services. This is really the first time in, I think, about 45 years that we had a vacancy in that position, because with Dan Edwards retiring about nine years ago, we had a succession plan in place, and then our Brian Yvaro, our previous city engineer, stepped into that role. So we really haven't had a vacancy, and so it was kind of the first opportunity to say we need to look at this from all angles. I talked to a number of communities that have hired or tried to hire city engineers, and one of the things that, a theme that I was hearing was very small candidate pools. One city recently had two candidates that they had for their position. The other thing that we were hearing was if you are going to have candidates, they're likely going to be right out of school, and, you know, that's good or bad depending on who the candidate is. But anyway, during these discussions and during this process, the city was approached by more engineering about a possible relationship to provide general and project engineering services to the community on an exclusive basis. So they would be basically doing the full-time engineering work for the city, day-to-day, but also any projects that we have. As we were discussing all of our options, we took the time to meet with more engineering and started to explore what a potential relationship could look like, and after we met with them, we asked if they could put some of their thoughts in writing and provide more of a, a formal proposal that has numbers attached to it, so we can do some cost comparisons and see if this is something that actually could become viable. Once we had that, it quickly became an attractive option for the committee, as you see within your packet and the materials I provided. Moore is proposing that they do the general engineering, which is essentially the, the day-to-day work, like our engineering department would do, for a flat fee of $16,000 per month. That would include things such as management coordination, which is the day-to-day, they would be at council meetings, they would be part of our department head team, technical assistance, plat and site plan review, environmental and regulatory compliance, that could be some of our MS4, our stormwater things, capital improvement planning, GIS services, and then one of the things that was also really attractive to the Personnel Committee was their commitment to look for external funding sources for the, for the community, so locating grants and resources. They have a, a division or staff dedicated to seek out grants, write grant applications on behalf of the community and some of those things. That was really an attractive thing for us. At $16,000 a month, that equates to an annual amount of $192,000, so really a fixed amount. We know what we'd be paying for these services on an annual basis, and so we looked at what our current costs are, providing these services in-house with wages, benefits, equipment, subscriptions, and all of the different things that go into this, that would now be part of this contract, and that amount comes out to just over $633,000 a year. So we would So we would see an annual savings on the day-to-day general engineering side of around $440,000. And I used round numbers. It was a little bit higher than that, but $440,000. The other thing I want to note, the $633,000 I just mentioned does not include a GIS position, which historically we've had about, just over a year ago, we took that out. Otherwise that would be another $100,000. So it would be about $540,000 is what we'd be looking at as, as a savings between the way we've kind of always done things and what's being proposed here. On the project engineering side of things, more engineering has proposed a flat fee of 15% for each project. This gives us the ability to kind of know what our costs are going to be and, and provides a good savings for us. Currently, we see our project engineering between 20 and 25% of a project. We've seen it up to 35%. Sometimes smaller projects up to 40%. And of course, the savings on the project side of things would be dependent on the number of projects, size of projects and volume of projects. But we can expect to save between five and 10%, I would say standard on each project. So you know, as you get into a couple million dollar project, five to 10% starts to be a, a real meaningful number. We, in comparing our existing methods to the proposal before you, we analyzed the recent splash pad project as an example. On this particular project right out the window here, we saw our engineering costs at about 35% of the project. And admittedly, that's a very complicated project and there's a lot that goes into it. But 35% and then using the proposed 15% from more engineering, we would have seen a savings of just over $745,000 on one project alone. So about three quarters of a million dollars on that one project under this proposal. So really significant kind of eye-opening numbers, which is why the committee certainly was attracted to exploring this further. The total savings again is dependent on the volume and scope of projects. It's hard for me to stand here today and say you're going to save X amount on the project side of things because that's wholly dependent on the cost of our projects, the 15% of that, and then the number of projects that we do. The more projects you do, the more money you would save under the new format compared to the old kind of thing. The master services agreement, which is what the council's being asked to consider today and on Monday, we propose that to be for a term of 10 years with the ability to terminate the agreement if we aren't satisfied with the services. We're not locked in, but we do have the assurances if we're pleased that, you know, we're going to be able to have these services for at least 10 years and, and gets us down the road a ways. More Engineering, as you all know, has been a good partner with the city for a number of years. They have an office located here in Fergus Falls, but they also would plan to have the appointed city engineer have regular office hours at City Hall for the public's benefit. They'll be available in person via phone, via email, and that contact information would be shared as the representative of the city. And then I just wanted to note, more engineering serves as city engineer for approximately 150 communities of varying sizes across Minnesota and North Dakota. We would, I don't, I don't know this for certain, but we would likely be the biggest client they have at this point in time. They used to be the city engineer for West Fargo. And then when West Fargo hit about 40,000 in population, I think it was, it made pretty good sense for them to move that in-house. Obviously, when you're considering outsourcing work and doing something that's disruptive like this to the organization, the, the most important thing is your employees that are impacted by that. And that was top of mind for each and every one of us from the beginning of these conversations all the way till today. There was three full-time employees that would be impacted by this move. And there is obviously our retired engineer, Dan Edwards, continues to, to serve as a consultant on a part-time basis for us. And Dan has graciously volunteered to help with whatever transition needs to happen. And then he will likely depart as well when the time is appropriate. As part of their proposal, more engineering has assured us that all of the impacted employees would be offered jobs with their company. And even further, that they would be working on Fergus Falls specific projects if they wish to. So they would essentially be doing the same work that they're doing today, just under a different organization umbrella. So really kind of a neat and unique offer and situation for, for us to be able to talk about if the employees are interested in that. Obviously, it was important to us and, and top of mind and, and we insisted as part of any conversation we had about this, that our employees would be well taken care of, would be considered. We have very valuable employees in this space, one that's been with us for over 25 years. And you know, it's, it's obviously a sensitive thing and, and that's the hardest part of, of this job and any conversation you have about this type of thing. To that end though, conversations have taken place with these impacted employees. The union contract requires that we give the employees a 30-day notice before the council were to take action like this. And so I met with them, I don't remember the exact date, but it was about 30 days ago. And the way that, that process works is that we have to kind of justify why we're looking at what we're doing, make the business case for that. We provided some of the scenarios and the numbers that we're considering. And then we also have to negotiate in good faith with the union and the employees over the, our intent, but also the impact to them. So we have met with the unions and employees on two different occasions and we have reached separation agreements with all of those individuals, which are subject to city council approval and will be before you on Monday night as well, assuming this moves forward to that stage. As part of those agreements, the employees have submitted their last day of work as June 2nd, which is Monday. And with the council's approval on June 2nd, more engineering is prepared to immediately transition into this role as city engineer and make a real seamless transition. I do want to note, because this employee has told me a couple of different times, one of our impacted employees is going to work, I know for sure, going to go work for more engineering. And he was strongly encouraging me to pass on and to advocate that we move forward with more engineering because he has a desire to continue to work on these projects and work with the people at the city and continue to do those things. So I wanted to just make note of that. One thing I will also mention, we have really specialized services at both of our landfill and airport. And our intent would be that those specialized consultants continue to work in those spaces. It's Houston Engineering at the landfill, which is really an interesting topic of study with the hydrology reports and some of the things they have to do out there. And then SRF at the airport. But more engineering, as the city's rep in this proposal, would, would represent the city and work alongside those firms in those locations. Then one final thing I wanted to note, your honor and members, is that conversations have taken place with both Interstate Engineering and Bolton and Mink about our intentions to move forward with this and how we got to this point. Bolton and Mink, upon learning of our conversations with more, requested and submitted a proposal to provide these services as well. I put that proposal in your packet, so you've seen that. Their monthly rate was $20,000 in project fees of $18,000. There's also a letter from Interstate Engineering that I included within the packet as well to show the dialogue and their feedback. And with that being said, the Personnel Committee is recommending that we proceed with more engineering. As I mentioned earlier, the resolution before the council would be to approve and enter into the master services agreement, which is really that overarching agreement that spells out the terms and conditions. That has been reviewed entirely by the city attorney and has been edited and gone back and forth with more engineering. And then the other action would be to approve task order number one with more engineering. That is to provide the general engineering services. And then going forward, on each project, you would see a task order before you. So task order number three would be the first project-specific work that they do. And that'll highlight the scope of the project and that 15% flat fee. And then each task order, or each project then would be assigned a task order and that would be back before you on a project-specific basis so you know exactly what's happening. So that's, that's what we have this morning. A lot of information, certainly a, a big change being proposed. But your honor, if, if you or any other Personnel Committee members want to add anything, I certainly would appreciate that.
Thank you. Laurel, did you?
You want me to go first?
Go.
Couple of things. I've had conversations with all of the engineers in this room and this isn't taken lightly. I know we've had, Andrew mentioned, good working relationships with more. I think we've had good working relationships with all of you. And so this isn't taken lightly by any means. And it doesn't mean that one relationship is better than the other. The proposal from more just was the one that made the most sense. And so I don't think that that's something that is taken lightly by any of us, as is the situation with the staff. I mean, I probably was the most vocally concerned about the impact of staff in the room. We all were, but I mean, that, that is something that, that is taken very seriously when we're having these conversations. The fact that we had the assurances that these gentlemen were going to be taken care of and that, at least from Troy's perspective, he's very happy. I mean, we, we have staff that is coming out of this feeling comfortable with where they're landing and wanting, encouraging the city to move forward in this way. And I think that's an important thing for the public to know. It's not easy. That doesn't mean that that's an easy process. My other thought would be, we, I think, and maybe Andrew can clarify this, there'd been conversation that we weren't going to allow more to sign off on city projects that they were working on. Is that in the agreement or how, how is that getting handled?
Yeah, no, I, I couldn't say if it's spelled out specifically in the agreement offhand here, I'd have to look at that. But one of the conversations I've had with more engineering, and, and they agree that if they're going to be approving something on behalf of the city or reviewing something for approval, that there's a conflict if they're the ones that are also designing that or doing that work. And they're comfortable with that distinction and with representing the city as opposed to things that would be coming to the city, which would be a, a very good opportunity for other firms within the area, the community, to have that private side of the work that would be submitting those things to the city for more's review. The other thing that I, the other conversation I had with Tyson from more engineering was that if there's a specialization that they don't have, for example, like a structural component to a project, an interstate or other local vendor has that, that they utilize and subcontract that work with our other local contractor. And Tyson had no issue committing to doing that.
That was my next question. So that, he covered what I was going to say.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Al, did you have anything?
When we first met with more engineering, they had a great presentation. As time went on, you know, I did some research right after that meeting. I talked to the powers that be up in Fargo, who has done work with more engineering. And that, that construction company is massive, the person who owned it that I spoke to. And his comment was to me was, you know, you're just looking at one engineering firm. This guy is a guy who built the Alara Center and stadiums throughout the country. And that was his comment to me. So you didn't talk to anybody else? Not that I know of. I'm not upset with more engineering at all, nor any engineering company. I would have liked to seen all three of them at the table together. To me, it's no different than what happened down at the Stanton Project when there was one developer that was sought out by the former mayor. And that didn't go so well. But then again, it did because it saved us money on TIF. So it's the process, I think, that bothered me more than anything right now. I'd have liked to been real free to have, hear from the employees at the city here, that they could come up and speak in front of the council, not ju, because we didn't speak to them as a committee. They weren't present when I was there. So I think that's, that's what bothers me is the procedure that was done. And that's what I have an issue with. And the last vote that we had on more engineering with basically temporarily signing off on these projects, I can understand that, but I did vote no on that. And it has nothing to do with more engineering, but it has to do with more engineering was in contract negotiations with those employees. And I'm assuming with the city too. So that was my objection to that. It wasn't more engineering, it's not interstate, not Bolton Mink. It's just how that process went. I want that to be very clear where I'm coming from on that. Because I think we need to be very transparent when it has to do with this. As far as the money end of it, yeah, it's a savings. And I'm up for savings, but I'm also up to being amenable to these employees because I know what it's like. It's been almost a year and a half ago when there was a change in my employment and I know how those negotiations can go. And I think that they, they needed to be a little bit more involved with what was being, what we talked about. And I'd like to heard firsthand what was going through their mind because I know what goes through my mind. Thank you.
Hey, Jim, do you have anything? I was going to basically make a comment and then look for a resolution till that then everybody can discuss.
Okay.
This was just coming from the Personnel.
I'll offer the resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Laurel.
I think, you know, as, as Andrew kind of put, you know, the Personnel Committee, obviously, you know, this got landed in our lap as well. It wasn't something that the city was looking to do. But with obviously the departure of kind of the city engineer, you know, it's always prudent at that point to look at all options that, that are there. You know, each and every one organization offered to be of assistance to the city during a temporary phase of whilst we decided what we wanted to do in terms of, or looking for an engineer, whether it was city-employed or not. You know, more was the one that did bring forward a suggestion of obviously looking at, at contracting those services. And I think, you know, the Personnel Committee met at least three, four times to, to talk about this. And you know, there was good dialogue about what, what we should do and what we shouldn't do and the potential of, of getting a saving for the residents of Fergus Falls, but maintaining the services that we needed. And I think, you know, when you looked at what they had to offer, you know, from, whether it was from communications, whether it was GIS, and looking at putting the database together on the infrastructure of the city. And you know, as appealing as anything is also the fact that they're looking at, you know, they have a department that looks for grant opportunities to spread, spread the dollars that we commit to do greater projects. And you know, like, you know, probably, you know, many of you in the room, you know, I've also worked with kind of both engineering groups, you know, personally, and equally would say that, you know, both are good groups to work with, some. I think, you know, this is a, a good deal financially for the city and a good deal to maintain the services that we're required to do from a city perspective. And at the end of the day, you know, we're saving $440,000 a year, which is a significant amount of money in anybody's book. I think Jim, do you want to go first?
Yeah. To be perfectly clear to everybody, we are not looking at this point or in the near future for an in-house engineer. Is that correct?
That's correct. Your honor.
We're going to contract with, with more for 10 years, possibly.
Yes, your honor, Councilmember Fish, that's correct. More Engineering would replace the entire engineering department and would do all of those services. What we would be looking at doing is on Monday night, appointing an individual within more engineering to serve as the city engineer. And that person would be the one that sits in this chair right here, serves as, as essentially a department head in function and would be a key member of the city team and do exactly what you've seen the engineering department do the entire time you've been on the council.
Thank you.
Your honor, I appreciate it. I'll be very brief. I know we have an eight o'clock timeline with this and I think, I think we'll have ample time under the, the big lights of Monday night to be able to discuss this in entirety to the length that needs to be discussed. But the one thing I want to say to the constituents of this city right here today is the reason I cannot go forward with this, and I like to explain it to you, is this is a flawed and discriminatory process that happened within the city. And I, I can't, I can't go for that. The other thing I want to say to the engineers, the other engineers in this room, is I apologize to you that we did not take this process and turn it into an RFP to give you the needed time that you needed to be able to go at this and have a chance at this. I hope that will not deter you from what you've done with the city for over 30 years and going forward with us, but I apologize to you. To the employees that are in the engineering department, some of the greatest employees the city has. this city has, I apologize that I couldn't be in the gap for you when what you wanted to do was you wanted to finish out your career working for this city. The one thing you wanted to do was finish your career working for this city, and I apologize that I wasn't there. To the other city employees that are watching this today, stay steadfast, stay strong, stay with the city. I assure you, myself and other council members will not allow this type of process to happen to other members of this city. You're trusted, we need you, stick with us. Do not look at this as the trend going forward. Your Honor, I ask that this not go on the consent agenda. I think there's a lot of discussion to have on Monday night, and I look forward to an aggressive discussion on this topic. Thank you.
I guess I'm going to take a little bit of a different approach. Our job on the council isn't to specifically hire various people within the staff. We hire Andrew, and the staff hires within their departments. And to that end, I commend Andrew and the staff for figuring this out. You know, you were given something that hasn't happened in a long time and had to find a way to deal with it, and I think you've dealt with it in a good way and given us a good option. And again, I commend Andrew and the staff for bringing this forward, and I'd speak in favor of it.
Your Honor, I have a couple of things, I guess. I'm honestly kind of flabbergasted that this committee's not in the same position that the last time we all sat in a room together we were. I know there have been meetings that we've had members that have not been present. I don't feel like that's something that any of us that were present can control, and I know life and jobs get in the way. I understand that. But I'm surprised that we are not united as a group right now, and I understand we all have a right to change our mind, but that's surprising to me. And this has been hard because none of us could talk to the employees, and that's because of union rules.
Correct.
And we wanted to.
That's correct.
Scott?
My question is to Al. You had all the information in front of you throughout this whole process before any of us even knew anything about it, and you were on board 100% until today, I believe.
No.
That's what, when they stood up there and said, the Personnel Committee said you're going to be, we're in for this, that means you, Laura, Laurel, and Andrew and Anthony. I mean, that's the four of you.
And somebody was speaking for me, but if you realize what I had said earlier, I did not vote for that the last time.
No, no, I'm talking about you guys and your Personnel Committee. You guys, that's what your job is. It's a very important job, just like the Tax Levy Committee. That's a huge thing, and when you come back and Andrew says they're in for it, I don't even look at it. It's just, I'm going to vote for it. I think it's a great deal, it's a good deal, because you guys did all the legwork, not us.
The issue here is, like I said, this is not a surprise to me, and it shouldn't be to you, because I did not think, I thought there was a conflict of interest with More Engineering when they were going, be signing off on these projects prior to them getting, and they're going through negotiations. That's what I had an issue with.
Why didn't you bring that up to the Personnel Committee? Weren't you at all the meetings? Did you go to the meetings?
Yes, I did.
So I'm still, I don't understand what, you're against it, but...
I had said that.
You're there for it.
I had made mention to that to the mayor.
But not in your meeting, obviously.
But you know what, Scott?
But, don't get it.
I don't either. I don't get where you're coming from. I don't understand it.
The Personnel Committee says we're in favor of doing this, and we recommend doing this to the council. You're part of that committee?
There's two on the Personnel Committee, Laurel and I. And then there's Anthony and Andrew. That's the group.
You had all the information in front of you. You could have stopped this a long time ago if you didn't like it.
No, I couldn't have, because I wouldn't have had the vote.
You could stop and have a discussion and talk about it.
We have had discussions.
Did you voice against it? I was understanding you were all for it.
I voiced against it for the last...
You did research on it, you were for it.
You know what, Scott?
I'm just saying that's what they told me. Laurel.
Al, the last meeting you were at, you sat at the table, two seats from me, and said, "We 100% have to do this."
I said, "I think we need to really look at this."
You said you were 100% in support of this.
I mean, I wrote it down in my notebook.
At what was presented at that time, and if you want to try to crucify me, just keep going.
Nobody's trying to, Your Honor.
I think it's not helpful.
My, I just want to bring the light to people that this is, we have all this information on, when you're a person, when you're on a committee, you have all the information to do it. That's why I just want to bring light up. We'll discuss it again on Monday night, absolutely. I'll be ready for it then.
Your Honor, the one thing I want to say is, and I'm not trying to crucify Councilmember Kremeyer, but if I would have known he wasn't opposed, I wouldn't have written a memo as if it was on behalf of the entire Personnel Committee and represented as such. But the last meeting we had on this matter as a Personnel Committee, I heard the words, "I'm 100% on board with this." And the story that he told today was told differently within that committee. It wasn't that we should talk to multiple engineering firms, it was that these are great guys and a great firm.
That's exactly right. That's what was told to me, but also what was told to me after the meeting is when I did the research, he said, "I think you should talk to other people, too, other engineering firms." And that was translated to Anthony.
So my apologies to you, Councilmember Kremeyer, if I represented that you're in support of this within my memo and you're not, but that was the impression I got based on your comments at the last meeting. So I hope nobody takes it as if I'm trying to, you know, put words in your mouth, because that's certainly not what I meant.
At that time, I was in support of it. But then I was also under the impression that it was also talked about with Interstate Engineering and Bolton &amp; Mink, but I did not realize that it wasn't.
That can't possibly be true, Your Honor and Councilmember Kremeyer, the conversations we had.
I mean, we were all in the HR meetings, and we talked about that.
Well, it must have been one that I wasn't at.
You've been invited to every single meeting.
I have, have been.
And you have attended multiple of those meetings, so don't use that as an excuse.
I think I missed two of those meetings due to work issues.
So...
And I think there was three.
Al, I guess, I apologize, because I answered, Scott, in what I thought was accurate, that I thought we were united on this. And so if I misrepresented that, I had no idea we weren't.
Well, I don't know what else to say on that.
But I just want you to know, like, I didn't realize we weren't.
And I think that would be true of myself. I thought we were all in agreement, and that was the last kind of meeting we had. So with that, obviously, we, yeah, we can call for a vote, and it will go on the Monday night's agenda, and will obviously no doubt be additional discussion then.
Your Honor, may I just make a closing comment?
Yep.
If we go back to the minutes, I called for a special closed session. Could have avoided all this conversation today. When it deals with personnel, I dealt with the whole department, the council should have had a closed session and had this all aired out.
Can Andrew speak to the fact that why we couldn't do that?
It will not happen again, and I apologize to these people.
That is a...
Those comments are pretty sharp, Your Honor. The process we followed is very appropriate, despite the comments that you want to create today. This is not a closed-session matter. You'd be violating the open-meeting law in the state of Minnesota to go into closed session to discuss this. You, as a body, have appointed a Personnel Committee to serve these matters, and they all come before the city council, which is why we're standing here today and on Monday. If you don't like this, vote it down. That's the right you have. But to gaslight and say that we've created this discriminatory process is so out of line and inappropriate. This happens in companies every day across America, and more and more, given the economic factors. We did everything in our power to create a situation that was good for the city organization, good for the employees, so they're treated fairly on this side and on the other side in their next job, and also for the taxpayers of Fergus Falls. That's what we did. You have the ability on Monday night to vote up or down, but to just...
Do I misunderstand the rule that...
You do, Your Honor and Councilmember Layton, there, you cannot go into closed session to discuss what you're proposing.
It was about personnel, and that's what I talked about.
That is a stretch of the statutory language. Personnel performance, things of that nature, which does not, this does not concern the performance of any of these employees. They do a remarkable job.
Okay. If I need, I'll clarify it, and I apologize if I'm wrong. I misunderstood, I thought, a closed session when it came, I mean, a whole Personnel Department. Thank you.
I think on the same hand, just to wrap this up, because time is pressing, we have subcommittees for a purpose, and the whole purpose of those is that they make recommendations back to the council. There was good representation on the Personnel Committee, and if, obviously, if the council doesn't trust, you know, that committee's recommendation, then obviously that's a different issue, but as Andrew said, you have the right ultimately to vote yea or nay on whatever is proposed. We all ran on the basis of transparency, going into, you know, more closed meetings than is necessary, you know, is against that, and also we all ran on basically looking after costs, you know, for the taxpayer of Fergus Falls. This, I don't know where in the city we are going to make as much of a significant saving as we are going to do if we go ahead with this contract. Ultimately, everybody has the right to their opinion, and as Andrew also said, you know, the biggest thing that came out of this was, or the biggest thing going into it, should I say, was making sure we looked after the employees. That is not a standard format. Most companies in America, if you are lucky, you know, they give you two to four months of severance, and they don't look to try to help you land in another place. And, you know, we have gone above and beyond that, what is reasonable from that point of view in terms of corporate America. The federal government is laying off people in the tens of thousands, and they're basically, yes, they're giving them severance, but they're not helping them get another job. So I think that, you know, the staff is, as Andrew said, we want to make sure that they land in a comfortable place, and they've all got opportunity to do that. And, you know, the fact that you have to deal with the union to work with these employees is also another wrinkle, that you can't simply have conversations with employees as you would if you were an at-will employee in a normal situation. So with that, we'll vote, and then it will come up on Monday night, and we can have further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign.
Aye.
So is that just two? Three? Thank you. With that, just a general announcement, the Aquatic Center has got open house and tour this Thursday, the 29th, between 4:00 and 6:00. Be able to buy passes. Monday at noon, there will be, oh, 11:45, there'll be comments, and then obviously a grand opening of the Aquatic Center at noon. 4:30, there will be a council work session for the audit presentation. 5:30, city council meeting, and then June the 11th, committee of the hall.
Anthony, Mayor?
Two other announcements. The Humane Society groundbreaking on May 29, 4:00 p.m., and the Sculpture Walk on 1:00 p.m. on Saturday.
Thank you. Thank you. Good meeting.